Welcome to the February, what is it, 13th, 2018 School Board Meeting of the Carson City School District. It's six o'clock, we're in the Sierra Room at the Community Center, and it's time to begin the meeting, and our first agenda item is adoption of the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Motion and a second, any discussion for the public? And seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Agenda item number two, we will now adjourn to closed session per NRS 288, 220, sub four, to discuss labor relations with the district's management representatives, and this is for discussion only. We're going to reconvene to public session now, and we'll begin with flag salute with Stacy.
Please join me in pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, agenda item number five, superintendents' report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to introduce our student body president, Mr. DeJaro Navarro, and he is here to introduce some of our royalty from Winterfest, is that right? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, I'm not DeJaro. She couldn't make it today, so she asked me, I'm the vice president, my name is Edson Limas.
My apologies.
It's fine, I feel like I can't look like a DeJaro sometimes. So, yeah, so I brought one of the winners, he was the Winterfest junior prince, so if you want to say like what your experience was and how things were for you.
Hi, I'm Axel, and I was like Edson said, the prince for junior class for Winterfest.
And would you say your name for the record?
Axel Wall. The experience was a lot of fun, we had lots of dress-up days and activities, we had lunchtime activities, we played can handball, it was handball, we had a tournament, and then there were nighttime activities throughout the day, or throughout the week, and it made me feel like more into the school, and I had a lot more school spirit throughout the week. The dress-up days were a lot of fun, they were, some of them were crazier than others, like Thursday we had a Shanghai where we just dressed up in anything that we had.
Yeah, for more clarification, our Winterfest week, our theme for this year was Into the Depths of Winterfest, and it was based off of Johnny Depp movies, so we had like one day designated to Edward Scissorhands, Pirates of the Caribbean, Alice in Wonderland, just like all of his most popular work, and then I can, I'll introduce to you guys the people who couldn't make it today, so our senior king and queen was Abel Carter and Lauren Lemberg. The prince for the junior, the princess for the junior class was Emily Jaeger, that's how you pronounce it, right, Emily Jaeger, and then sophomore class winners were Eduardo DeLeon and Cameron Quilling, and the freshman winners were Carlos Torres and Abby Lemberg. And we had a big turnout at the dance, we had about 600-plus students, everyone seemed to enjoy their time, usually we have a couple hundred students leave around nine when we're allowed to leave, to let them go, most of them stayed this time, which was awesome. Yeah, that's pretty much it for Winterfest, that concludes my report.
How can that be all when you beat Douglas?
Oh, yeah.
You can't forget that, that was the best part of Winterfest for me.
Amazing game, I've never been so hyped up in my life, it was amazing, I had fun at that, too.
Well, you say you had a lot of, you know, participation, so we got about 2,400 students in the high school, how many do you think participated, and just not necessarily the dance itself, but, but the activities you described?
Well, participation is something our school has been struggling with for a couple years now, and I feel like just like this year, lots of students, there was some controversy over the theme, and some students decided not to participate for personal reasons, and I completely understand, you know, but we just had to do whatever it took, and from our power to try to get everyone else involved, and there's still lots of participation and everything, but it's not as much as we would like, but it's more than previous years, so there's some hope to it.
Other comments, questions? Congratulations, good job.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, I only have one other item to bring to your attention, coming up on February the 21st, so a week from tomorrow night, we'll have our next community PLC at Carson High School's library at 6:00 PM, thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to board reports, see Pioneer's out here, but we'll go right to Carson.
Okay, so tomorrow there is going to be a student council meeting for students. Oh, yeah, my bad, there's going to be a student council meeting, and then the 16th and the 19th, there'll be no school, on the 26th, there will be an early release for students, and on the 27th, it's the ACT testing for juniors, so there will be no school for freshmen, sophomores, and seniors, and that is all for my reports.
For Fritsch Elementary, save the date for March 7th, that will be their Dr. Seuss celebration with green eggs and ham, so that's my report.
A few announcements from Seliger, Principal Zona, and Vice Principal Cohen, they finished their access testing earlier this month, and they've had a Valentine Friendgram program, which everything will be delivered tomorrow, and lastly, they've started on February 6th this month, a school tutoring program called Pirate Club, which is actually after-school. And then I have another announcement from the Carson Middle School Band Program, to announce their 10th Annual Chili Bingo Night, which will be a week from this Friday, February 23rd, and of course, there'll be bingo prizes, raffle, so it's a big, yeah, there's a whole list of prizes, anyone's interested, I can hand that out, also, there's a chili cook-off, and anyone can enter their chili, and there'll be some celebrity judges as well, and that's my report.
From Fremont Elementary School, they will have a sock hop on Friday, February 23rd at 5:30, they will also have a school improvement meeting on Friday the 23rd from 3:30 to 5:30, and that concludes my report.
If you remember last meeting, I told you that Pioneer was being sought after and asked to present at one of the mega-conferences for the Board of Educ, or Department of Education, they were one of the qualifiers, and they did qualify, so we're looking forward to seeing what their presentation is going to look for, it's pretty good for them to be able to highlight the good things that they've been doing. At the parent engagement council meeting that I went to, we had a lot of updates, just remember to save the date, September 22nd is when we're having our parent engagement summit meeting, it'll probably be in Reno, I'm in charge of the facility and I haven't quite got that down yet, so we'll let you know about that, there is an opening for the PTA representative on that board, and then we went to the nutrition meeting for our district to go over how Airmark's been doing this last year, so I think AJ's going to have a presentation about that when it comes up with their contract, so you'll know more then, but there's a lot, there's some good news there. And then at NASB, for those that came, we had some really good training, and people got on committees, like Laurel got on two committees, so those things are going well, we have September, we have April coming up, is April 20th and 21st, and they will be here in Carson, because Reno is full from a volleyball game, so we will be hosting, so you guys will at least have to show up and say hi, and see everybody, it's going to be on school safety, it's going to be with pool pack, so that should be a pretty good presentation, too. And then just like to thank Carrie Pryor for having the cookies and milk with the new hires, it was nice, Ms. Crossman and Mr. Sorzik were there with us, and it was a real good turnout, and it's good to see those new hires still excited about teaching their first year, so that was a nice break, and the cookies were delicious.
I just have one, one announcement for Eagle Valley Middle School, and it's a little far off now, but, but we need to bring it up, and that's the steam night on March 6th, to keep that in mind, not only for parents, students, but the community at large to, just to go and participate, what happens at Eagle Valley with Lisa Saki Coop is just unbelievable, so I, I hope I got the, we, I forgot the notice, first of all, on the March 15th, but then I got a notice that it was changed to March 6th, so.
I have it written down as March 7th.
I'd heard it was March 7th, because I tried to get the green eggs and ham night moved, and so I was thinking it was the 7th.
We'll go with March 7th, okay.
Can I add something? We would also like to thank Angela Gulick for the talent show that she held during Winterfest week on the Wednesday night, it turned out really great, and we all had fun, so, yeah, thank you.
Since we're all adding things, I forgot the time of the chili night, chili bingo night, 6:00 PM, February 23rd, come and have dinner, have some chili, we'll also have hot dogs.
Association reports, and seeing none, we'll go on to agenda item number eight, which is public comment, before I read this, is there anyone here who would like to come forward and just talk about anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to agenda item number nine, which is the informational update on the Read by Three program in the Carson City School District, it's a mid-year review, Susan Keema and Nathan Brigham.
Good evening, members of the board, and Mr. President, I'm here to give you guys an update on our winter Read by Grade Three results. As soon as the PowerPoint's up, I'll get started. Oh, I have to do, there we go, okay. Before we get started with the first data slide, so I know that this was sent in the board packet, and the two slides that are in there that show data from fall to winter of last year and fall to winter of this year, the results on them look very different, and before I get into that, I wanted to give a quick explanation as to why. Last year was the first year we really were identifying deficient students, putting ILPs in place and tracking it, and last year, our interpretation of the law was that in the fall, when students took the fall MAP test, if they were below, at that point it was the 39th percentile, they were identified as deficient, that was our deficient list for the school year, we tracked those kids to see how many kids we were able to move off of that deficiency list, no kids were ever added to that list after we took the fall MAP test. Over the summer, looking at the law very closely, the law states that if they are deficient at any point during the school year, and then talking with Dr. Laxall at the state and getting some clarification, if a student is proficient in the fall, but in the winter, they're now below that deficiency rate, they are added to that list, new students that come in after we've assessed already and they're deficient, they get added to that list, so that list is, it's not always tracking the students you started the year with, so that'll be more clear when we look at the data here. So remember, the reason that we tracked just first through third in the fall this year was because last year, kinders took it in the fall, and this year with the change, they did not take it in the fall, so the fall numbers up there are only first through third grade students, and in the winter category, so if you look at Bordewick, they went from 102 deficient students to 96, and then in parentheses, I put the kinder students that were added, I didn't add that to the total number, because it would have kind of thrown off what we're looking at here. So Bordewick showed us six, a drop in six students, as we go down the list, you see that our district total in the fall was 640, and in the winter excluding those kinders was 672, so we showed an increase of 32 students deficient. I'm going to jump forward real quick and then jump right back, because when you look at how many kids we actually moved off that started with us in the fall, we moved 173 of those students that were deficient and are now no longer deficient. But what we have to report to the state is that we gained 32, and the reason that it's really important to look at that is, those students in the fall, they had, by the time funding came out, they really had about a month and a half to two months of actual interventions. The students that got added, they received no interventions, if they were proficient in the fall, they had no extra interventions, now they've dropped below that line and they count against us. Students that come in from out of state, it looks like, if you look at this slide that we report to the state, our Read by Three program wasn't effective, but if you look at only kids that were identified in the fall, and how many of them did we move that received interventions, we moved 173 of those students, that's a huge success. And when you look at this second slide, I compared winter of last year to winter of this year, last year in winter, go ahead.
So is that, when was winter 2018 or 17, so when, when was the test?
So it's, it's winter 2018, but since we tested December of 17, it's listed as 17, but it's the current school year, yeah. So when you look at this, last year in the winter, we moved 108 kids off, this year, only looking at kids that were on in the fall, we moved 173 of them off, go ahead.
So my comment is, why, oh, sorry, I don't want to front of me, my question is, why is winter of 2017, on this slide, such a different number than the previous slide, winter 2017, because to me, just looking at it, I think they should be the same.
And that's, so on this slide, we only looked at kids, so, let me go back here, so at the start of the year, we had 640 kids that were identified as deficient, if I only look at those kids in the winter, we now only have 467 that are deficient. We rose to 672, because kids that were proficient in the fall that did not count against us, say they scored the 42nd percentile, now they scored the 39th, they now count against us, we added, it was 278, 77 kids that were not deficient in the fall, but were either a new student, or were above and now moved below, and they count against us when we report to the state, so it's not an accurate reflection of what did we do, was it effective or not, because those kids weren't part, they didn't get those interventions.
Maybe just a second, or a second column that says, you know, keep, keep your number for winter 2017, but then say, in between the two, added, you know, these students were added, because, or identify, identify how many, yeah.
And so that's, this slide basically is showing only kids that were on, so for, on this slide, that winner column is only tracking kids that received actual interventions, this is what we have to report to the state, though.
You don't report the other thing to the state?
No, last year, that's how we reported, so last year in the winter, we reported 508 students and a reduction of 108, because that's how we had interpreted the reporting last year.
Is that consistent with how other districts are reporting it, or do you know that other districts are interpreting it the same way now, or is each district interpreting it differently?
Talking with Dr. Laxall this year, almost all districts now are reporting it the way that we are reporting it here, it's, some states have not, this is their first go-around, or it's not states, some districts, this is their first go-around with this, because they weren't part of Phase Two, and so there's still some inconsistencies there.
One of the questions I have is, when you look at the data, it seems pretty similar, but we do have one outlier, and so is there something going on that would contribute to that, or do we know?
On which slide?
First, Seliger, so they, yeah, I mean.
So, if we look at this one, too, because that brings up a good point, Fritsch and Seliger, if you look at this second slide, so when we do compare reporting the same way, you can see that Bordewick, Empire, Fremont, and Mark Twain moved more students this year than they had last year, but Fritsch and Seliger have not, and part of the reason for that is, last year, while we didn't get funding at the start of the year, we got funding last year for Read by Three considerably sooner than we did this year, Seliger and Fritsch were the last schools to be able to hire interventionists, the last schools to be able to hire tutors, and that really shows in the data that if you don't have those resources and you don't have those supports, because the Title I schools had had some of those positions paid for out of Title I, so they had them from day one at the start of the year, and you can see that they had the better results. The state has assured us several times that next year's grant will come out this year and before the end of the year, they will be awarded so that we can start fresh with everybody at the start of next school year. We good?
Well, why don't you go with your presentation?
Okay, so spending a little bit more time on this slide, real quick, if you look at comparatively, we have moved considerably more kids this year than we did last year, and again, like I said, our funding actually came out later this year than last year, so in a shorter amount of time, we've actually shown better results this year, if you compare the data the same way than what we had done last year, so I think that's a real big achievement, and I think a lot of it has to do with what we put in place last year, it was new, it was being refined, and this year, we have that process down, teachers knew what to expect, they knew how to do it, we had our mid-year interview with the state for our implementation, and we had two teachers on it, and they both said, this year's gone a lot smoother, because we knew the process, we knew what to expect, and so I think that plays a little bit of a role in the data also. And so then, progress towards our goals, our goal was to try and get a 20% reduction in deficient students this year, last year we had a 13% reduction, so we were shooting for 20 this year, the way that we have to report it to the state, we're at a 2% increase right now, and again, because that's students that weren't on the list that are being added to the list, if we reported the way we did last year, we're at 11%, and so considering fall to spring last year, we were at 13, and this year, fall to winter, we're already at 11, we're well on our way to hitting that 20%, and when we set 20%, we set it based on the way we had done the data last year. As far as our ILP goes, and that is our individual literacy plans, so those students who are identified as deficient, that is their plan with their interventions, again, at the state progress monitoring meeting, one of the teachers' biggest comment was, I knew from the time I wrote my first one, what it was supposed to look like, how it was going to get. So I think that's a real big achievement, and I think a lot of it has to do with what we put in place last year. It was new, it was being refined. And this year, we have that process down. Teachers knew what to expect, they knew how to do it. We had our mid-year interview with the state for our implementation, and we had two teachers on it, and they both said, this year's gone a lot smoother because we knew the process, we knew what to expect. And so I think that plays a little bit of a role in the data also. And so then progress towards our goals. Our goal was to try and get a 20% reduction in deficient students this year. Last year, we had a 13% reduction, so we were shooting for 20 this year. The way that we have to report it to the state, we're at a 2% increase right now. And again, because that's students that weren't on the list that are being added to the list. If we reported the way we did last year, we're at 11%. And so considering fall to spring, last year we were at 13, and this year, fall to winter, we're already at 11, we're well on our way to hitting that 20%. And when we set 20%, we set it based on the way we had done the data last year. As far as our ILP goes, and that is our individual literacy plans, so those students who are identified as deficient, that is their plan with their interventions. Again, at the state progress monitoring meeting, one of the teachers' biggest comment was, I knew from the time I wrote my first one, what it was supposed to look like, how it was going to get implemented, and what interventions were effective and weren't, based on their experience the prior year. As we talked at the first meeting, we know that we can't compensate teachers adequately for the amount of time that goes into those. It is in the grant for some compensation, but it's a process that teachers feel a lot more comfortable with this year. Our MIUs, our measurable instructional units, that has been the main focus of the learning strategists this year, is going through and creating instructional units that are aligned to Common Core, because there are some gaps with the current reading program and Common Core. So we've been working on these measurable instructional units to address that, so that when we do get those kids above the 40th percentile, they're readers now, the next focus is on the standards, on really making sure they have those standards to get them to that proficiency mark. We've hosted weekly ELA cafes. We kind of tagged on to the tech cafe. So every Wednesday for two hours, myself and one of the other ELA ISs are there, so that anyone that is working on piloting these MIUs, they can come in, they can collaborate, they can get support, they can talk to the ISs on exactly how it's going to look. We currently have just over 70 teachers in the district piloting these ELA MIUs. Once they're done being piloted, the next step will be to take a look at curriculum. So this is the plan we have, this is the order we want standards taught, these are the expectations, these are the common assessments that we're going to give. The next step will be to look at, now we need a curriculum that is going to make sure it addresses everything that's in there. For SFA refinements, it kind of goes hand in hand with that. Those teachers that are piloting, they have been given a lot of latitude with the materials specifically that they're using. So they're free to choose books outside of SFA. They're not locked into reading the teacher's manual from SFA. We provided them with a breakdown of all the standards, sample questions to give that are aligned to the standards and the level that they'll see them on SBAC. So that's what they're using as their basis to start with, then they have freedom to go choose resources that will fit that. We've also shifted all of our meetings this year. We've been working on instructional rounds. When SFA comes out quarterly, instead of having an all-day meeting focusing on SFA data, what we've done is taken the, all the administrators and ISs, we've gone to different sites in the district. And they're not really observations, they're instructional rounds, but we're looking for good things that are happening at sites to share with other administrators to take back to their sites. The feedback from the administrators has been that it's been a wonderful opportunity to get out of their building, to see what's happening at other school sites, and really improve what they're doing at their own school sites. And then the last part, we were working on increasing our family and school partnerships. As part of the grant, there was a parent involvement facilitator. We almost have all of them hired. Again, one of the hard parts about having a grant come out after the school year started is anybody that's qualified has already taken a job somewhere. So we're, we're working to try and get all of those positions filled. And then the other big part with that is academic parent-teacher teams. We are currently piloting that. I know Ms. Pryor's going to give later on in the year, once we've gone through the process, an informational update on what that is. But it's a way to try and make our parent conferences more engaging with the parents, give them more academic information, and try and get them involved a little more in what's going on. And that's it, except for questions.
I mean, I've got, how many, how many students do we have in, in the first and third grades here that we're, that we're measuring?
Off the top of my head, I cannot tell you that number.
It's about 1,700.
About 17, just first through third?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's like 550, 600. Are you asking on the plans or?
No. Total number of, how many?
So there's like about 550 per grade, sorry.
550 per grade level, so almost 600, so 1,700-ish, I would say. Total, total kids, not necessarily.
No, this is just first and third. I know there'd be.
First and third or K through three?
Good, thank you. You know, I just look at the, at the numbers and the way we're, we're supposed to be measuring, and we have some kids that were deficient that we didn't include. But we have 672 first and third graders that are deficient. And I think percentage-wise, that's pretty.
It's 38.
That's why?
It's 38%.
Well.
I do know that, because I know you guys wanted numbers up here, not percentages, the first time I had done percentages, but it's 38% of first through third.
First of?
Yes.
And as your team, as you get together, we're taking consideration the timing of funding, but what you presented, is that, do the teachers or anyone else have any other ideas that will address this large percentage?
Ideas as far as?
You presented, you know, the ILPs, MIUs, and the, you know, SFA enhancements and things like this. Is that pretty much it? Do you need more help or what, where is it?
38 is a high percentage. It's a lot higher than we would like it to be. It's lower than it was last year. We were, we started the year last year at 42. So we are showing a decrease. Part of the hard thing is, again, like if you look at this, tracking kiddos who got interventions, we're doing great. It's very hard to control the massive influx we are having of students from out of state, out of district that come to us deficient, and right away are being counted against us. We need time with them to get those interventions, which I think is a benefit of identifying them. Kiddos before that were deficient in the winter and we didn't add them to the list. Now, many teachers did things on the side with them, because that's what a good teacher would do. But now by truly identifying them and putting them on the plan, while we're increasing that number, we're going to be getting those interventions to more students, because we see that the students that do get interventions, we are being successful with those students.
Question on your 38%. Is, are we still at about, what is it, 17, 18% EL learners in the district? Or have, have we seen, with the increase in students, has our percentage of EL learners also increased? Where, where are we at with that, I guess? It's about 17, 18%? Okay.
And I can tell you right now, I couldn't give you the exact percentage, but I know right now, our ELL students are not the majority of our ILPs.
Well, no, because.
Yeah.
There's, there's still 20% that are, if, I'm just taking the 38, taking off 18%, you still have 20%. So yeah, they're not the majority, but just, just by definition, an EL student's not proficient. So I would expect someone learning English to fall within that 38%. So I was trying to figure out how, how many were not.
I said one quick one. Would it be reality, when you were talking about the kids in the fall, and then they pass in the fall, but they don't pass in the winter? If you take, and maybe there's no money, I don't know, but let's say you take, it's 39%, right?
Forty this year.
Forty. Would you take maybe everybody under 50 might get put on the program?
I love your thinking. If you look at it right now, sheer numbers-wise, if you look at a school like Boarderwick, in the fall, they had 102 kiddos. So you're looking at about 30 kids per grade level, you're looking at about 10 kids per class. When you've got 20 kids and almost half of your class is mandated you do this, yes, it would be ideal to do that, I completely agree with you. Now you're looking at 60 to 70% of your class, and that is just, this is already a huge burden. And I don't mean that in a bad way. It's a lot of work for our teachers, we're seeing great results, it needs to happen, but it is a big burden for them.
I think you, you did bring up a good point. Would have been, I think, nice, just for the differentiation or perspective, to have like the total number versus the number we're looking at, and then, and then how many did move in or move over. And I, I think you brought up a good point. You know, we have to keep that in mind, and that we don't want to be down our staff that, you know, some of this stuff you can't, is out of your control. It's just the way it goes. So I, I think especially on a meeting like this in front of the board, that's something nice to highlight for us too, because it would be easy to pound our fists at some of this, and so.
I could have very easily come in and only reported this slide, because that's what we're reporting to the state, those are the numbers. But that would not paint an accurate picture of what our teachers and what our students are doing right now.
Right. So I guess thank you for, for highlighting that, but I think all of us like more, even if it's just in our preparation packet, it's just kind of nice to have that perspective as, as little as how many students are there across all these grades, you know? It's just easier than asking the questions when you're standing up here.
I'll make sure I add that next time.
And I just want to go back to my original question, because I'm looking at the 2017-18 deficit students, first through third grade. So the one with 672 in the middle. So if you look, it shows Seelager had a change of plus 24 students on ILPs. So Fritsch had an increase of six. Empire had an increase of, or seven. Empire had six. Boarderwick and Mark Twain had a drop of one or six. Fremont had an increase of two. So I mean, I don't see Seelager and Fritsch, I mean, that's significant change of, if everybody else is in the single digits and we have a school that has added 25 students to the list, that's my question is, why is that such an outlier? What's going different at that school than the other schools?
And so again, a thing to keep in mind here is, all that takes is a few more kids moving to that zone that are low. And when you look at where students are moving and you look at changes in demographics of schools, I don't think it's actually that surprising. Talking with people at Seelager, a lot of the new students incoming, they are not proficient students.
So, and I mean, and I guess, and this would, if we had the data of, of those 24 students, 15 are new to the school, that would be one thing. But without that data, when I look at this list, I say, wow, what's going on? That's, that's a whole classroom of kids. I mean, we've increased students on ILPs by a whole classroom. I mean, so that's not shocking to you. To me, as an educator, I say, what's going on? And so that's kind of some of the questions that I had when I looked at this is, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just saying that that was a concern for me.
Next time I present, and I'll break that, so they're plus 24, I'll break down how many of them were existing students that were enrolled, how many of them were newly enrolled.
And I guess even looking at it further, when we see minuses from some schools, there is some transancy among our students from elementary school to elementary school. So I don't know if we're tracking, hey, Boarderwick lost six, but guess what, they all went to Seelager. Or do we know where they're going that way? That would be a little more information as well.
Nate, we talked a little bit about this yesterday, when we're the, the cookies and milk for the new hires. But talk to me about the SFA refinements and what you, how big a difference you think that this is going to make going forward?
So that's where a lot of this stemmed from, was when you look at, at the wings program, so our second through fifth graders, and you look at their curriculum through the manual, and you look at the Common Core standards, there's not a close alignment. And so we designed these MIUs program independent. We basically looked at the standards and said, what does a kid need to have? Once that's all mapped out, then we need to start looking at curriculum. And there'll be an official curriculum adoption, and we need to look at what programs match and don't. If you look at Kinder and Pre-K, their programs match very well with the standards. The Roots first grade program, there are parts that do and parts that don't. Wings is where you see the biggest separation from the set curriculum to the standards. And so that's part of the teachers that are piloting the MIUs. They're keeping all the good instructional practices that were part of SFA, because they weren't created by SFA. They're keeping all of those in place, but we're, we're really just getting rid of the manual that said, read this, ask this question, do it on this time scale. And it's on Wednesday tomorrow, we are reviewing the formal survey data from our pilot teachers. So they all filled out a survey as far as what resources they used, what didn't they use, what did they like, what suggestions do they have? All the ISs are going over that tomorrow. I've done a quick look at it, and it's, it's very, the people that are piloting like what they're doing with it.
So you say we get, or the wings program, Grace 2 through 5, doesn't align at all with the Common Core?
It's not a close alignment with Nevada Academic.
Right, which is Common, okay, yeah. Okay, so we have some decisions to make, and then based on what you come back to us and the recommendations, where we go. And I, and I say this, because if this makes a significant difference, and, you know, that we move away from that, and the number of deficient students goes way down, that's a major, that's major.
We meet, the ISs meet every Wednesday. That is all we've done every Wednesday for the whole year is work on these MIUs, because we believe very strongly that that is what will happen with them.
So we have, this is.
I wanted to add too, that those, the assessments that go with the MIUs, the implementation specialists have developed them so that they're technology enhanced, they model after the SBAC. So there's some practice there for the students when they're taking these MIUs. They're not just strictly multiple choice. They are technology enhanced, which they did right off the bat.
So just for clarification, this is our second year of Read by Three?
Our second true year. We're technically Phase Three. There was a Phase One year.
Okay.
But we didn't have any of this process in, in place. We weren't identifying deficient students, we didn't have ILPs. Last year was the first full implementation.
And then when does the deadline come where we can't promote the third graders because of this? What year is that?
That is the 2021 school year is the first year a kid would not move on. Okay, thank you.
Nate, thank you. When will you be back for your next report?
As soon as all of the spring math testing is done, and I have the data collected and segregated a little bit.
He might not be there tomorrow, Mr. Swirson.
I just, I just want to thank Nate. We did have a monitoring visit last week with the State Department on our Read by Three grant, and we had, last year when we met, Susan Kima for the record, when we met with the State Department, we had our directors, our principals, our implementation specialists there, and then a sprinkle of teachers. And this year, Dr. Laxalt said, you know, he only, she only needed Mr. Brigham and myself there for the monitoring visit since we were in Phase Three. But instead, what we did, we had one implementation specialist from Fremont, and then we had three teachers there with us. And we said right from the beginning, the teacher feedback is as much of a focus group for me as this is a monitoring visit for the state. And so it was very enlightening to hear those teachers talk about the process from last year to this year. And something that kind of stood out, that was my takeaway, is that they were talking about how last year, it was all about the process. How much paperwork? When do we need to do the paperwork? When do we communicate? How much paperwork? When do we communicate? When do we send out the letter? When do we meet with the parents? When do we collaborate? It was all about the process. And they were talking that this year, it's more about talking. And they were talking that this year, it's more about talking about student learning and are the interventions working during their PLC time? And so I thought that was something that I'd like to share with you. I mean, they had some things that they know that it is time consuming. But I was in the grocery store the other day and one of the participants said, you know, it was nice to, thank you for this time together because it was nice to be an adult. We get so focused in our classroom with our students. It was nice to be in the big picture and just to kind of hear what the requirements are. So I'd like to give a thank you to Barb Martin, who is a classroom teacher from Boarderwick, and Beth Jones, special ed teacher from Mark Twain and Kristy Wertz, ESL teacher from Fritsch, that participated in this feedback session with the state.
And I think that's really great you include them because there's so much of, we tell teachers, well, this is what the state requires. And so getting some people in there to see that this truly is what the state requires is a little eye opening. It's not just you're being difficult and making them do extra steps. It's it's a true requirement. And so I think that that's as much an education for the teachers as a good excuse for them to be with adults for a little bit.
Oh, absolutely. And just Nathan prepared, was, you know, very, prepared us very well for that meeting and he and those implementation specialists are working really hard on those MIUs. I mean, to put them out and have them technology enhanced the first year, put out the survey data, working with 70 people in the pilot, we're hoping, we're expecting great things. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number 10, which is discussion on newly proposed CCSD policy 820, safety and surveillance monitoring in certain public areas of district facilities and school buses. This is first reading for discussion only. Ann.
Thank you, President Swirzik, trustees, for the record, Ann Seer. So this evening I have the pleasure of introducing a new policy and regulation concerning the use of our surveillance system. These items are in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the the policy that's being introduced.
I just have one little note. The district in the second to last sentence, I capitalize it because we capitalized it earlier.
Thank you.
Okay, Ann, you just want to give an introduction of why we're doing this?
Yes, so in general, it's just best practice guidance. We installed the new surveillance system roughly a year and a half ago, and ideally we would have had a policy and regulation in place to guide the use of that when we installed it. There really haven't been any remarkable incidents that have occurred, but just some things that I've observed over over time that would suggest that some guidance to staff on the appropriate usage would be a good idea. So we developed the policy based on a model policy that was put out there by the National School Boards Association. I contacted Washto County School District and reviewed their practices. Clark County School District took a look at how they managed the use of their system. Also, a couple of white papers out there and had all of that put together, reviewed by Mr. Pavlakis, and this was the the draft that we have for you.
Okay, you know, just going to the, okay, the policy, you know, and the regulations. You make reference to people like maybe parents or others that could request the video and/or recordings, I guess. When would this occur? How would that occur?
So every now and then we have a student who might be involved in some type of behavioral issue or student altercation, or perhaps there, there's property destruction, there's someplace where they're not supposed to be, and we have that on video. And sometimes, not all the time, parents would like to to see that. And whether or not we allow that access to that video is really guided by whether or not we have other students on the video and whether or not we have privacy issues that we need to take into consideration and the nature of what we're looking at.
One more, and that is on the 21-day retention of this information. Is that something?
Is that the regulation?
We're not on the regulation yet.
Well, I know, I've, I'm going.
You've got to open.
I'll be right here.
And that's, discussion on newly proposed CCSD regulation 820, safety and surveillance monitoring to include surveillance systems, acceptable use agreement.
Yes, thank you. And again, for the record, Ann Seer. So the regulation goes a little bit more into detail, of course, in the direction that's given to staff, identifies that the scope includes all of the property that's under the ownership or control of the school district, addresses the process that we would like to have staff adhere to when they wish to add additional cameras at sites, outlines the appropriate and prohibited uses of the system, notification to the public that we would be providing some signage just at the entrances to the buildings that the area does have video surveillance, monitoring and recording evidence, what that might be used for, investigations, a section there that refers to the use of the video for investigations of safety concerns, security concerns, issues that take place on buses, and that our SROs have access to this system and that they may access that information in conducting investigations that may be of a more criminal nature. And then some guidelines here for requests for access by third parties, how we would respond to those. And then we get into the collection, storage, and disposal of information. And I believe this is where we're getting into that area of the retention period. That retention period was determined when we did the original installation and design of the system. We looked at what other school districts, how long they were retaining video files. And of course, the longer you retain the video file on a server, the more storage space you need. So looking at different districts and their retention schedules, that was a pretty common period of time, three weeks. Usually, if there's an incident that's having occurred, that you need to retain that video footage, you know about it within a week or two. Very, very rarely does it take three weeks for for knowledge of this incident to service, and then you can take whatever steps are necessary to preserve that. Training, that all of the folks who have been provided access to this system would be given some training on how to use it and what the appropriate use is. And then, of course, compliance with laws, just kind of keeping abreast of developments because the use of surveillance systems in public schools is still new and there is a lot developing. And so it's important, I think, that we continue to monitor that landscape and adjust that regulation as necessary.
I was just going to say exactly that, is that I think that this is really thorough, but I could see things coming up in the coming months and possibly years where you're going to be adding in sections and whatnot. So I mean, technology is just changing that quick for us.
Yeah.
Just just a comment on the first page, approval, installation, and operation. Under paragraph four, just because I'm making the sentences and verb structure match, under C, I'd put are approved in writing by the risk manager because the others are.
Thank you.
Can you explain how it works with the public records request? Is it the same as other documents or or public information requests, you know? Because it's mentioned in here.
Right. So the district has procedures in place that are run through legal counsel's office in responding to public records requests because there are timelines that we have to adhere to and certain steps that have to be taken.
Well, I guess what I, because I think we do, you know, like if you request documents, usually there's a, you have a policy where there's a price for a certain sort of doc. How's this work? Like, do they pay for a drive or, you know?
Yes, so rather than spell that all out in this regulation, we refer to our procedures for handling public records requests rather than duplicating those instructions in this regulation. Those requests would be treated as any other public records request.
Page one, under four, again, we're talking about a limited number of authorized operators. How many of them do we have right now?
So right now, and these would be the appropriate limited number of of users, you have principals, vice principals, deans, and SROs, and then, you know, administrators at the district who have a legitimate interest and may become involved in in those sorts of matters.
And they've all been trained?
I wouldn't say all of them have received training as much as they probably need to. So we need to come back around and give them a little better instruction in the use of the the system. And the associated document, the affiliated document that's referenced here, the Safety Services Bulletin, Surveillance System Operating Guidelines, although that wasn't placed in your your packet, that really gives them that kind of step-by-step guidance, how to export a video, how to copy a video, how to bookmark a video.
Just, I can't believe we didn't have a policy or a regulation on this. I'm glad that you caught that and have done such an extensive work. It's a it's a nice document to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And for keeping us safe and hopefully out of trouble.
Look forward to the second reading. Thank you.
Discussion and review of board bylaws 050 organizations in this regarding the process of election of officers for the ensuing year, beginning with the 2019 calendar year. And this was brought up by Joe, Joe Cassiello, and it was all, and even though he's in New York, he texted me and he said, he just wanted to restate what he said at that, at the last meeting, a policy that maybe would address the issue of absences and training. Now, those are two specific instances. Now, as a board, you know, we've got 050, you know, how, and I would throw this out now just to begin the discussion, how far do we go? Do we say if you have a DUI, we have, you know, we could go on and on and on. Do we need that?
I would just say for 050, I don't think we need to go into the specifics of what there may be. It's it's open. I I think that we accept nominations for all the board positions based on whatever the climate is. I wouldn't want to detail that in the procedure in which we nominate them. However, I think by law, 041, the code of conduct for trustees, if we wanted to include, that already includes some expectations on what trustees should do, that we should know and follow, we should read and understand the open meeting law and Nevada ethics, those things. If we wanted to include something in that bylaw with the expectation that trustees will comply with the training required by AB 451, I think that would be the bylaw to add it into, which I realize is not this agenda item. But the other other bylaw that would apply would be by law 040, membership, because we do talk about orientation, and there's a section 8C that says the board shall encourage the attendance of each new trustee at orientation workshops or conventions of NASB, and I think we could include something there to attend trainings at NASB. If that was, if if we're looking for trainings, I think there's, I think the code of conduct and the membership already include instances such as DUIs or excessive absences or or other things like that. So if, depending on what we, where we want to go, I just don't think that bylaws 050 is the one where we'd want to do that.
Kind of going along with that, I'm thinking, I don't know that we necessarily want to say NASB because I could see myself like, maybe I need to go to the TESL conference and it's during one of the training. Well, I earned professional credits for attending that training. So I mean, I don't think we want to limit it. I mean, if we're going to some training that's going to beneficial to the board, I think that that's.
No, I agree with you, and I think we could use the language from AB 451 because it does specify the areas in which we should receive training and whether those are received through NASB or PoolPAC or TMCC because UNR Extended Studies offers several classes that way. Even even the national convention, you know, you have to submit what classes you attended there and then they'll see where it fits in and 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 keep that for you. But if, I I think that including the compliance with the new, the new law in our code of conduct would be appropriate when we get to that.
Okay, but but for 050, we don't, is the consensus of the board that probably it's just just fine the way it is? Yeah, I don't think we want to be, get prescriptive in that, in a, in a, that kind of a, okay. So for a future agenda item, then maybe we'll want to bring back the code of conduct 041 and what is it, 040?
And then, we also need to bring back the ones for duties of clerk because now that clerk has that new duty because of AB 451. That's what I had under my future agenda items because they now have that duty of reporting and posting.
Okay, we could do it all at once. We'll bring them all back. Okay, moving on to agenda item 13, approval of consent agenda, this for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees accept the consent agenda to pass it, minute.
Okay, we have motion in a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Agenda item 14, informational items for discussion only. Any concerns on the informational items? Agenda item 15, request for future agenda items. Now, in this, we talked about setting up a workshop for the, you know, the, with the other four elementary schools that we haven't gotten to and and the two middle schools on regarding the upcoming SBAKs. And, Mr. Stokes, do you have any, I mean, we don't have to do it on a, on a, on a board night, we can, we can make it on a separate night.
SBAKs or school improvement plans? You said SBAK, but I think you meant school improvement plans?
Well, it would be, it would encompass the SBAKs as to the preparations and where they're going this year, just like we had Empire and Fremont, you know, come forward with what they're doing different. So with that, do you have a?
In light of it being spring and testing around the corner and everything, is this something that maybe would be better to do in the summer? I'm just worried, I mean, they, I'm sure they put a lot of work into this and it takes extra time and they have to gather stuff up. I'm just more worried, unless we, I mean, we, we want to see where they're going and and that they have a direction. they have a direction, but I hate throwing extra stuff on them, especially coming this time of year. That's my own, my only thoughts to it.
Well, here's my thoughts. You know, I think we should, and I think we should ask some questions upfront, instead of then going, getting results back and saying, "Well, what just happened?" We get to ask beforehand. What, you know, it's not, doing a whole lot, I don't think, a whole lot more work on their part, because they should already be into this. They should be able to present very quickly and concisely, "Here's what it is. Here's what we've done differently to get different results. We're not going to do the same thing and expect different results. You know, we're doing this differently based upon what we learned the previous year." And that would be something that, you know, I would suggest we do it as a board. We could do it individually. We could go and meet with schools individually. You know, if we don't, I'm going to be doing that. But I want to know before, and not then come in and say, you know, after the fact.
I guess my concern would be just kind of going along with what Ryan said, is before is right now. I mean, we're in that testing window. Like, right now, I'm doing access testing with my ELL students, and so, I'm in the middle of it. And if I had to stop and put together something to present to the board, because as educators, they're not just going to come in here and wing it, if they're talking to the school board. So, that's going to put significant preparations on there. And so, I just think that, I think that we're a little late now to say we're going to do it before, but maybe I'm wrong. I mean, I guess that's a question for Mrs. Kima and Mr. Stokes. I mean-
Well, we're talking about the principals of the school, the same as Susan Squires at Empire, Jennifer Ward at Fremont. I mean, Empire, they brought, I mean, the teachers just wanted to come. I talked to them at, you know, yesterday, and I says, "Hey, I was impressed with," and they want, they were excited. They wanted to talk about it. And again, the pleasure's the board. If you, if you don't want it, you know, then individually, as I said, I'll be out there myself, because I want to know before.
I, part of me thinks it would be good to give the other elementary schools an opportunity to share what it is that they're doing, and how their, what their school improvement plans are, because everybody has one. At the same time, it is an additional, I don't know.
Do they work in the summer?
Yes.
Yes, they do. In fact, for most of the summer, we've got staff members who are interviewing and hiring teachers when there are vacancies.
So, maybe that's it, maybe the summer, because those meetings are relatively short too, at this point, so.
I wouldn't say more to, at least, I've always felt myself, I get a lot more out of going and visiting a site, than sitting down and talking to them, to be honest with you. Not that, I do want to know, and what I, and what we've all talked about is, I think we want improvement. When we do get those presentations, or this, you know, data, that kind of makes more sense sometimes. But, otherwise, we get to this spot where there was things left on the table that we did want to know, so maybe the initial presentations could be a little better, but I could go either way. I just feel like during this time of the year, it's just not a good time for them.
Sorry, I'm just thinking, because we've usually done roundtable discussions after we get results from the testing, are we, I imagine we would do that as well, but I do kind of like the idea of, some idea where we anticipate, you know, do we think our MAPS tests are correlating, do we, you know, I don't know.
Could we just, I mean, I guess maybe a happy middle place might be, instead of, instead of them making some presentation, and it's a sit and get for us, if we put together, kind of like, what is it, a workshop before the meeting, where it's a true dialogue, and those are the questions that we ask. We don't want PowerPoints. We want, we have questions about how this is being implemented, what are the goals, what is the data showing you? I mean, I think that's the kind of meaningful discussion that would be a lot more helpful than, you know, a 15-minute slideshow or something.
And if we do it as a workshop, then they're not out as late, if we started at 6:00.
Okay, well, the question is, do, we're all in agreement with them, do we want to have that kind of a workshop, and doing it, doing it within the next two, three weeks?
One suggestion, just in light of the amount of time it would likely take to do the elementary one night, and maybe the middle schools another night, then I think the dialogue might be shorter and more meaningful.
Okay, maybe we could just, you know, work on setting a date of the next board meeting to have the elementary schools, and the following one, the middle schools.
And in my dialogue to the principals, it would be, "Don't prepare other than what you bring to the job every day, and we'll have that dialogue," or do you want them to bring their school improvement plans? Just looking for some direction there.
You know, I think it'd be nice, maybe if, because you could, we can get their, or you could give us their school improvement plans, but maybe, I think one of the downfalls we've always had with these workshops is that they, it's not even, it's like this lead thing, and I think more genuine, like what Ron was talking, if we all just came with some questions, but maybe having those school improvement plans could help us formulate our questions. And then, we literally lead it in a conversation format, or something less formal, I guess.
Well, and I think they might want to, because there's things they might want us to know that they're doing at their school sites, and if that's something they wanted to prepare, I, you know, "Hey, we've got really good stats, or really good data about this," or, I don't know, something that they'd like to, what's working best for them, you know, that type of thing.
Maybe they could talk from their Nevada School Performance Plan Report, which is a one-pager, rather than the School Improvement Plan Document, because the state changed some business rules in this particular area also. We didn't receive our data till December 15th on the NSPF, and then the state, the sites were required to turn in their school performance plans on January 31st, and they had, like, barely three weeks to set something up with their staff to be able to look at what the results were, and submit something. So, we were advised to submit something that we might have had in August, but then in the following year, they're going to change the process. So, we're in a state of transition with that thick document, that might be considered the school performance plan, but using the one-page Nevada report card piece is something that you could have a look at and formulate questions, because they're going to base their plans off of that. And then, it's not, I wouldn't say such a big paper overload for you, but also something that's very relevant to the administrators. That would just be my suggestion, if you're going to use an artifact.
And we'll keep this simple. The primary focus would be, what are they going to do to improve the math and reading scores? What has been done differently than in the previous two years? I mean, we keep going over the same things over and over, so that would be where we talk to each other, just like Ryan said, we'll have a little chat, you know, what have they done, and what do they expect from what they've done?
Just another request for another future agenda topic would be the by law 040 and 041, and then whichever one applies to the clerk's duties.
And then, it doesn't have to be soon, it just has to be sometime this year, because it's not, I just need it by January. But, I'd like to have a workshop, or a time where we go over what the legislature changed that we had to do certain requirements, and Dottie gives us that spreadsheet that breaks down each bill and says trustees must have policy in place by this, just so that we have it on the record, and so that when we have to go to the legislature and they ask us about, you know, whatever bill we're talking about, where we're at, give me a basis, but it's not, it's when, like, we have a meeting like this, it's going to be over at 8:30, you could plug it in there. And I'll send you the document from Dottie.
I have it.
You have it, okay. So, just so that we have something on the record, if anybody ever wanted to look and see if we did do those requirements, and then, so I have it in January when I go to the legislature.
Additional future agenda items?
You know, and I don't know that I'm requesting this to be an agenda item, but we keep seeing things about the community PLC, and how that information is being reported to the public, and so, I don't know if that's a discussion item that we as a board might want to have, is how robust is our reporting? Is that something we want to talk to Mr. Stokes about, or are we perfectly happy with our current policy?
No, I think you bring up a good point. We, in fact, Richard and I have talked about, we have the PLC meetings, we have the strategic plan, and the board, we need to have those committees, you know, maybe at each board meeting, one would come forward to say, "Where are we?" You know, and actually have a, just a very pointed 15-minute discussion on, you know, have we moved forward, and how will we move forward, and where.
And I think that's what the PLCs are doing, is evaluating on, at least on the curriculum that matters. We're evaluating where are we at on this one, and this one, and this one, and usually, Mr. Stokes does report on the strategic plan at some point during the year, so that would be-
But this would be, this would be during the year, before we have that, we just-
Kind of like our quarterly reports with Race to the Top. We had Steve come in and tell us every quarter, say, "This is where we're at, this is where we're going, this is what we still have left to do," I think is what everybody's kind of looking for.
Because when that gentleman was emailing us, I mean, I go to all those meetings, but I didn't know exactly what to tell him. I mean, so I contacted, you know, Mr. Stokes, obviously, but, I mean, I think that as board members, we should have a way to, a quick reference, so that when somebody does email or call us, we could say, "Oh, let me review this real quick," and remind myself.
Okay, we're on to the last item, but without objection, we're adjourned, unless there is an objection.
Nice job, Ron.
Nice job, that's unbelievable, 8:30?
Yeah, but we're here, so it's-